Nineteenth. Our first order of business is call to order and rule call. All alderpersons are present. Next item is pledge of allegiance and prayer, silent prayer in lieu of invocation.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, next item is reading of the minutes of the previous meeting held on September nineteenth. What are your wishes? We have a motion by Veneman to approve.
Yep, move to approve.
And seconded by Zachar. Any additions or corrections? Seeing none, please cast your ballots. That motion carried eight A's, zero Nays. We're on to item five, which is consider the appointment of two regular members to the Ethics Board for a term expiring November first, two thousand twenty-six. What are your wishes? Uh, Mr. Delaney, go ahead.
I had a question that I sent to Jennifer and Sue. We just received one of these yesterday. Our city ordinance two point oh four C states the names of all prospective appointees to special committees, commissions, and boards shall be presented to the alderpersons at least three days before common council action approval and confirmation. We did just receive one of them yesterday. I never did get a response.
Well, that's my underst—excuse me. It's my understanding that it was received by the city prior—uh, earlier than it was provided to? Or I guess I'm not sure exactly when it was received.
Yes, the mayor received it on September eighteenth. It was forwarded to me on the nineteenth, but I did not receive it. For some reason, it didn't show, I don't have it. So she did drop—Fran did drop off a copy of it, and I forwarded it to the alderpersons, so.
And I guess in terms of—you could suspend that rule if you wanted to, if you felt that it—it, or if someone feels that it's impeding your ability to allow her to be involved in the vote. Or, I mean, it doesn't really say that those that aren't given—provided are, you know, can't be part of the vote, nor does it say that if you don't have all of them in the—in the, at the time necessary, that then maybe you bring it back next month when you've had at least three days to consider them all. So I guess I would say because it was provided to the city and it would prejudice the candidate to not include her, I guess I would suggest that you either suspend the rules regarding the three-day thing, or unless someone else has, you know, something else, stay—any other suggestion. But I guess I—in terms of the penalty for the three days, I don't think it should necessarily be, you know, prejudice the—the person who had given it timely, but it just wasn't given to you timely. And then I don't think we can force someone not to vote or nominate that person. That's not specifically the, you know, a remedy that's contained in—in the ordinance. So I guess it depends really how strongly you all feel about, you know, allowing that candidate to be a part of the vote or not. Yeah, right. That would be the easiest if—if you're inclined.
So I'd be fine with bringing it back next month. If anybody's here that would like to speak today, I'm—instead of having them come back, I would—I would allow them time to speak. That'd be great.
Mr. Veneman has a motion.
I thought we were nominating.
So you want to remove that?
Or I could make the motion to suspend—suspend it till next month.
You want to make a motion to table this till—is it tableed till next month?
Yeah, but then you want to allow her to speak, yeah. Um, yeah, I'll most—I'll make the motion to table it till next month, but if any of them are present today, they're welcome to speak.
Okay. And then we have a second by Bemke. Uh, Mr. Rayom.
I was going to say that, so.
Okay.
I'll pass.
Sounds good. Oh.
And I do apologize that you guys did not receive that, so.
Sounds good. Um, I think—I saw Fran. Would you like to speak today? Yeah, please come up to the microphone and make sure the green—the button light up—is lit up green. And then talk into the microphone, please.
Yeah, it's—it's lit up, yeah. Uh, I'm Fran Bailey-Golkey, and, uh, well, there's two of you on this council that have been here forever, like I have, and that's Dennis and Tom. And the rest of you are all fairly new to me, and I've been involved in—in committee meetings and recording the co—common council meeting and other—other areas. And I just thought, well, this would be kind of a start and get my foot in the door and get—it back in the city government again, which I would like to do. And so I would—I would really appreciate your support tonight. If you do have any questions, feel free to ask me. You can ask me right now if there's anything else that you would like to know that I didn't include in my—my application.
Thank you, Fran.
Yeah, thank you.
I see Jeff here also. Did you want to speak? Yeah, that sounds good, Jeff. And then I think the other one's Mike, but I don't see Mike here, so.
I don't see Mike.
Okay. Anything further from the council? Um, so the motion is to table this till next month and go forward from there. Okay, seeing nothing further, please cast your ballots. And that motion carried eight A's, zero Nays. Item six is consider for the adoption an ordinance, providing that an ordinance may be adopted at its first reading. It is, but I think it changed. So part of the rule was if anything changes, we have to bring it back. So the final ordinance is what you're voting on. First read on the final. Then we'll have to have a second reading next month. Okay, what are your wishes? Uh, motion by Katna to approve?
Yeah, motion by me to approve. And I think what we just went over kind of explains the reasoning of why I feel we need to move more towards bringing these ordinances and approving them and moving on and doing other things.
Sounds good. And a second by Delaney. Anything further? All right, please cast your ballots. That motion carried seven A's to one Ne. Item eight is if—sorry, item seven is consider a motion from Alderperson Bemke to rescind the action of the council at its meeting on September nineteenth, two thousand twenty-three, to send ATV, UTV ordinance to a binding referendum at the spring election. I guess Alderperson Bemke, it's your motion.
Thank you, Mayor. And I hate to put Sue on the spot with her voice and all, but I think probably the easiest way to do this is just have her go through what she sent to us, so—if you don't mind.
Uh, so I guess first off, I just explain the motion—what the motion to reconsider is and—and, I'm sorry, the motion to rescind, which can be done with basically any action of the council, and that's what's been requested to be done today. It can be done—it just requires a simple majority vote. And—and what it would do is if a motion to rescind is successful, then it nullifies the original action that was taken last month, which would be to send the ordinance to a—a binding referendum. The other part of my memo was regarding my—my legal conclusion, which is consistent with what I've heard from the League of Wisconsin municipalities, as well as a—a number of other city attorneys that I was in contact with, that your action in sending the—that type of ordinance to a binding referendum would be—it was—is impermissible. And that's because the binding refer—or referendums are creatures of statute, so it has to specifically be in the statute, in the state statutes. It has to be a certain type of referendum in order to be considered a referendum under state law and recognized in—by the Wisconsin Elections Commission. So the referendum, as it was sent last month, was on a general ordinance, which is not something that can be subject to a—a direct action by the council and be a binding referendum. Things that are binding referendums are usually triggered by statute amendments to the Constitution, for example, or exceeding our borrowing capacity—or to authorize borrowing—I'm sorry—to authorize borrowing. School referendums, to exceed set spending caps, changing the process of—of electing—maybe cert—of selecting certain officials. Those are all specifically in the statute that says these are binding referendum items. And so because the binding referendum statute does not specifically list a general ordinance such as the ATV ordinance, it would be my opinion that it's—it can't be—it's not appropriate for a binding referendum. The—I think where the confusion is—and some people are saying, well, because there's a new law—the new law regarding advisory referendums has now changed, and that's why we can't do it. But that's—I think the better take on that is, in the past, we've—we've called them binding referendums, but they were really advisory referendums because they weren't pursuant to state statute. But the council decided to bind themselves by whatever the advisory referendum was. So I think as municipal attorneys, maybe as city administration, that there—there have been referendums in the past where the council could have said, I want—you know, we want this to go to binding referendum, and we're going to agree to be bound by whatever the people say. But in reality, those were really advisory recommend—referendums because they couldn't have been binding because they were not created by statute. And then the council could do whatever they want with it. But now the—the change in the law was just this summer, and that says that you can't have advisory referendums anymore, except for very limited circumstances like telecommunications and cable utilities and by—a boundary referendum—or a boundary agreements and so on. So, um, so that's why I think that—that, you know, it—it is true that we can't—in the old—what we used to call a binding referendum was not really a binding referendum, and it was an advisory referendum, and—and we cannot do advisory referendums on ordinances like this. So I guess the bottom line is that I—I think it would be—it's impermissible to—to send it to a binding refer—uh, to a binding referendum. The only way that this ordinance would get to a referendum is the direct legislation route, and that's something that the council can't initiate. That's a process that's initiated by the citizens. And if so many electors circulate a petition and get so many signatures—which I'm not sure if we drilled down on what the number was—that would be needed. But if—if—oh, no, it's—it's probably a two thousand, I think. If—if the electors circulate a petition and say, we want this ordinance, then they can—they can even draw up their own ordinance if they want, but they could circulate a petition, and if they had the sufficient number of signatures, then that ordinance can come to the council, and you'll have a period of time within which to either approve it or—or disapprove it. Or—and if you don't approve it, then that's when the referendum is triggered, and then that's when it can be a binding referendum. But like I said, the only binding referendums for the ordinances and legislation like this would be a direct legislation referendum, and that would have to be initiated by electors. I talked a little about advisory referendums. We—the—the, like I said, the law changed, so we can't—we can't do that. So that's kind of what my advice to you is. As I said, I've talked to the—the League about it, and it's been unanimous with everyone I've talked to that there's really no way to send this ordinance to referendum absent a direct legislation petition by electors.
Uh, Bemke.
Well, I'm prepared to make a motion to rescind that based on the information that Sue just gave us.
So is that your motion?
My motion is to rescind the council's actions of September nineteenth regarding the ATV, UTV referendum.
Thank you. We have a motion. Is there a second? And we have a second by Austin. Uh, Mr. Katna.
Thank you. And thank you for that information, Sue. As I'd like to speak about how we got here and how we got here quickly from when we adjourned, Committee of the Whole Meeting Thursday night to here on Tuesday. There's—I've received a lot of calls, a lot of emails. I haven't been able to respond to them all. But if essentially Alderman Bemke had sent an email out Thursday night after we adjourned to the mayor notifying him that he was placing a motion to rescind. The mayor then put it on the agenda. And now, following this, we will have the same action item that we took up last month. So this is—we're rescinding tonight on short notice, which I—I think we should apologize for because we haven't had time to get enough public feedback from changing of the mindset of—they believed they were having a referendum for a month to now we are—we have an action item coming up after this, possibly. I don't know when this information became available, but I do know that we've had several Committee of the Whole Meetings over the past few weeks, of which this could have been an item on, and we could have addressed it then and then not had an action item regarding the ordinance following it. I just feel like it's a lack of transparency to the public who went along this journey for months on ATV, UTV, and are now here potentially having a decision made on whether or not we're going to do it. And so—a lot of people out there don't even know that we're attending these meetings or reaching out that we're at this point tonight. So obviously, the—the rescension makes sense from a legal standpoint. I—it would have been nice to have the information earlier. I'd be interested to hear how this all developed to an email to the mayor Thursday night. I wish the public and ourselves would have had more notice because we've been scrambling, trying to figure out where we're at here as the agenda came out Friday evening, and we have the action item placed on here as well to make a decision on the ordinance next. So I'd—also, I have some questions from some residents that I was not able to answer via email. This one—I believe—
So this—is this regarding the rescind, or do we want to take that up at the next thing? Because really, we should be having a discussion on rescinding.
It has to do with the rescension.
Okay.
Well, this particular gentleman is questioning—um, let me start. I'm not going to read the whole thing, but he says, "State stats—statute continues to allow for binding referendums which are not subject to newly passed statute six-six dot zero-one-four-four, known as Act twelve regarding advisory referendums. Any information that can be provided about why this motion to rescind the previous vote is being made would be greatly appreciated." And the public meeting noticed that it was sent out. It says, "See attachment four," but there are no attachments. I haven't checked on that attachment. I know, however, it is the email. So I don't know—if—Sue, you could speak to that, or if you already did, that's fine. But I'd just like to get that information out to those who requested it.
Well, right, I—I guess I—I can provide a copy of the memo. I mean, I think that sets forth a legal argument for why we can't take it to binding referendum. I guess I'm—is—I mean, I don't—what—what would you like me to—to do?
Like you said, there are things that can go to binding referendum. This is just not one of them.
Right.
I'm—I'm just reading the email and posing the question because I don't have an answer for him, so I—
Well, I think if you go through my, um, I guess this memo, I think it—it goes—it goes through what a binding referendum is, what a direct legislation referendum is, what an advisory referendum referendum is. So I guess I—you know, we can share that with that person if they're inquiring about it.
Okay, yeah, if—and I asked you earlier if this was internal. It sounds like this is going to be a document that can be shared. So I do have a few other emails. I'm not going to read them all because essentially it's—it's—it's a similar question across the board regarding what people are reading and questioning statute numbers. And I—for those who have that question that I wasn't able to get back to, we'll have you refer to this memorandum here that Attorney Schill has presented.
If I recall, Jake, this all kind of came about on Thursday. So this hasn't been in the weeks in the making for non-transparency. This really just came about—final ruling, I think, from the state with the attorney at the state level was somewhere around Thursday. So we—all these Committee of the Whole Meetings that have happened, there was no answer or any specifics to that by then. But it just came about on—right about Thursday.
Okay, thank you for answering that.
Yeah, there wasn't a holdout or not trying to be, you know, people—and I've heard that before about us not being transparent, and I—I just—I wholeheartedly disagree with that. And just because the next item has to do with the ordinance doesn't mean you have to take it up tonight. We just tabled the ethics, so this can be tabled and—and held off for next month.
Right.
And—and people could get organized and have discussions at that point, but—but I—I just—there was nothing trying to fast-track this through. And nothing with this ordinance has been fast-tracked at all because it's gone to how many meetings and it's gone to council. So, you know, I—I—I disagree with the fast-tracking and lack of transparency.
Okay.
Just because it—it—it did just come about.
Yeah, and I'm—there—there would have been an option to hold it at a different meeting, but we're having it today, I guess, is where the—it seems like it's fast-tracked. If the ruling came Thursday, understandable, but it definitely went-led us into the weekend when the agenda came out with really not a lot of time.
And then talking to Sue, the proper way to handle and dispose of the referendum is a motion to rescind. And the only one that can do a motion to rescind would have been Jay or Tom because they voted against it. So they're—they're able to—if I'm correct, Sue, or—
For a motion to rescind, anyone could. A motion to reconsider, it would have to be someone who voted on the other—yeah.
Reconsider would be for—okay, rescind. And then so it just made sense, and then we ended up here. Uh, Mr. Bemke.
Thank you, Mayor. So again, I think we've kind of covered most of this, but I was made aware of this Thursday night, and the reason it went out yet Thursday night is to make the Friday agenda for the morning. So we didn't want to act on this tonight. I guess we didn't have to. I do agree with you because of the short notice of this, that we should not be taking action on the next item this month. Give—give both sides a chance to make their phone calls and let their feelings be known. So the reason it came out the way it is is because it made the agenda on Friday morning. Thank you.
Um, Mr. Rayom.
Thank you, Your Honor. Just a question, I guess, and I'd recommend that we bring it back next month, but do we really have to vote on it? Or does it kind of just disappear on itself?
Motion to rescind?
Yeah, I mean, because it's—
Yeah, we—we have a motion and a second, so we need to dispose of it.
The question—I have, would we have had to vote, though? Because we can't do it, so it's null and void anyway.
Well, I mean—I—
It's clean.
Just the ques—just the question.
Yeah, I think right now you—you basically have ordered a referendum, so I—I think we need to close the loop of you rescinding that action.
Uh, Mr. Delaney. I'm sorry, where are you? Okay, Mr. Delaney.
I just have one question for Sue in your memorandum. It does state that the overwhelming consensus agreed with you. I would like to talk to the people that were not in the overwhelming consensus and ask if they had any good reasons that they didn't agree with you, or if there were other—if they talked about home rule, or if they talked about any other actions like this by communities that has a—has been fine. If you could just respond.
Well, I—when I say overwhelming, I guess I mean that those that spoke on the issue all agreed. The people that didn't—didn't talk or any—you know, didn't speak on the issue, then I guess I'm not—I didn't say that I wasn't going to count them as a agree with me, but I wasn't going to count them as necessarily a no. So I—I guess the—we have a—a—an attorney call every week with municipal attorneys and bring up different scenarios and questions. And I can tell you, you know, on the thirty people on the call, like, it—there wasn't anyone that specifically said, no, that's—I—I don't agree with your position. So I—but—but a lot of people were talking about it. So to me, it was—the majority of the people that were on the call were nodding their head and were in agreement, and—and no one specifically said no, but I—you know, I guess I didn't want to—we didn't take a poll or anything or a show of hand, so. And as I said, Claire from the League was—was solid with it, too. I think our county clerk also has agreed with the interpretation, so.
Yeah, and I—this is so new. It's—it's been since Grand Rapids had their referendum, so this occurred after that. So this is kind of fresh on the books. All right, any further discussion on the motion to rescind? Okay, seeing none, please cast your ballots. That motion carried seven A's with one abstention. Okay, we are on to item eight. If the motion for recession is approved, the council may consider the adoption of an ordinance to allow all train vehicles and UTV—utility train vehicles to operate on a city street other than the state highways. Uh, Mr. Veneman, what's your motion?
A motion to table this till next month.
So we have a motion by Veneman, seconded by Rayom. Uh, Mr. Katna.
Thank you. I think it's really important for those that have—are interested in the ATV, UTV on—on both sides of the issue, get a copy of this memorandum, and I—I'm sure we'll post it on the website or make it available if you request it. Within this memorandum, there is, on page three, a part that addresses direct legislation referendum. I think—I actually think this may benefit the ATV, UTV advocates and their—their push for bringing this across the state, and that it—it's essentially a legal tool that you can use throughout different municipalities. But the—it—in this, it states, "The ATV, UTV can be subject of direct legislation petition, which is initiated by electors. This could result in a direct legislation referendum, which would be binding." So essentially, the binding referendum can still take place, however, we cannot initiate it as a council. So I will stand by my comments in the past that I believe this should be a referendum, and I will not vote in any way besides to bring it to that. If—even if the council votes on the ATV, UTV ordinance at some point and it fails, ATV, UTV advocates can still— ATV, UTV advocates can still go out and use this process, so we can still get at the referendum. And there's going to be a number that will be published of how many signatures you're going to need to get it on the ballot. That number is going to be much less than it would take for this to pass. So I think one way or another, this support would have need, needed to be gathered. And I think this will be a great way, as you're going out and getting signatures, to put this directly on the ballot, that you can provide the same education to citizens about what the ATV, UTV culture is that you provided to us. Because throughout this process, there's been a lot of misconceptions by residents who are for or against it. And I think some of that can be cleaned up through the education process of those who will be, I'm assuming, bringing the direct legislation referendum. So take a look at the memorandum. That'll be my stance on it throughout this process going forward. But at this time, it sounds like we're going to table it, so.
And the only thing I'm going to add to that is I disagree because the council could vote yes, and we cannot have to worry about direct legislation then.
Or we could vote no, and they could still do.
Yep, yep, and I guess we'll see next month. Mr. Benhaman?
Yeah, so regarding the, so Jennifer, you'd sent out the population of voting that was for this, right? Oh, okay, I'm sorry. So it's not based on that same, oh, I thought.
It's based on the last gubernatorial election, correct? A percentage. Fifteen percent of the last governor's election of the turnout in Wisconsin Rapids.
Yeah, so that's what, that's the number you had put out?
No, that was a population estimate.
Population of voting.
Yeah, it's estimated. She'll do new math and figure it out.
So it's the fifteen percent of that voted in that?
Election, last governor's election.
That's not a very big number.
In Rapids, yeah, I'm not sure. It'll be a couple thousand, I bet you. Close. Let me consider, yeah. They all voted. She'll get it out and email all of us, then we'll know. Mr. Pollock?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Were you going to allow any of the audience to voice their opinion at this time, or?
I think since it's a motion to table, there's really nothing, nothing to discuss until next month.
Okay, I know some of them do have comments that they would like to make, but, okay.
Now, if we're, I think if we're voting on the item as is, then I would think it'd be more appropriate. But since the motion is the table, I don't know if they're going to convince anybody here to change their mind to table it or not. Because it's really what they should be speaking about, you know. But it's your floor. You guys can recognize who you want.
Well, I don't have any particular person, but I do know there are people out there that I thought were going to speak on it today if, if we got to that point, but maybe, maybe they're satisfied, we'll wait till next month.
Yeah, because we'll just do it all over again next month.
Right, okay, thank you.
Unless somebody has their heart set on it. I don't want to deny somebody to speak, but. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay, seeing none. Motion is to table it till next month. Please cast your ballots. That motion carried six As to two Nays. Okay, that motion carried and we'll bring it up again next month. So if this, you want to sneak out, maybe this is a time you can sneak out, unless you care to continue on with us rest of the evening. Okay, we're on item number nine, consider the adoption of the action of the plan commission meeting held on October 2nd. Mr. Kearns?
Thank you, Mayor. The Plan Commission met at 4:00 PM on October 2nd in the council chambers. A quorum of members was present. We also have a list of others in attendance in the community development department and clerk's office. The meeting was called to order at 4:00 PM. Item one was approval of the report from the August 31st Planning Commission meeting. There was a motion by Maruets to approve the report, seconded by Daven. That motion carried five zero. Item two was a request from Aspirus River View Hospital for a planned development district amendment to the existing planned development district boundary at 1041 Hill Street. Staff provided a summary of the report. Approval was recommended with conditions outlined in the staff report. Public hearing opened at 4:05 PM. Ray Mosky and Mary Goki, who live on Dewey Street, had some questions for staff, which were addressed, speaking in favor, none, speaking against, none. The public hearing closed at 4:13 PM. There was a motion by Daven to approve the request, seconded by Maruets, and that included three conditions outlined in the staff report. That motion carried five zero. Item three was the Rapids Rediscover Grant Request for 851 Gardner Street and five unaddressed parcels. Staff, again, provided a summary of the request and recommended approval with conditions outlined in the staff report and within the presentation. There is some discussion amongst the commission, which was addressed by staff. Eventually, there was a motion made by Daven to approve all six Rapids rediscovered grant requests, subject to five conditions outlined within the presentation. There's a second by Maruets. That motion carried five zero. Item four was a request to amend Chapter 11, specifically appendancy in a public hearing regarding dimensional standards modifying, modifying floor area requirements for residential districts. Again, staff provided a synopsis of the request. The public hearing opened at 4:30 PM. Speaking in favor, none. Speaking against, none. The public hearing then closed at 4:31 PM. There was a motion by Maruets to approve the request, seconded by Austin. That motion carried five zero. Item five was adjournment. There was a motion by Daven to adjourn the meeting, seconded by Maruets. That motion carried five zero. The meeting adjourned at 4:32 PM. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kearns. Mr. Catnall?
Kyle, can you speak to item four? I'm not going to hold it out, but if you can just go over it and what the modifications were.
Sure. So within our zoning ordinance, the residential districts RR through R4 have requirements for dwelling unit size. So if you build a single-family home, you have to have a certain amount of square footage. If you add a second bedroom, you have to add 100 square feet. Same with multifamily. If you have a multifamily apartment complex, you've got to have a certain amount of square footage per dwelling unit, per apartment. Those numbers, I think, have kind of carried over through the years and are a little bit on the large size when comparing to surrounding communities. So I think it's in the city's best interest to kind of reduce those standards, which hopefully will promote denser development for both single-family, duplexes, and multifamily, which hopefully should increase value on some of these sites. The example that I've referenced is, right now, if you want to build a apartment building, you can't really build a studio apartment because the minimum requirement is 800 square feet per dwelling unit. Most studios that I know are, you know, 600 or less for, for studios. So I think, again, those numbers are larger than what we see in surrounding communities. And the memo that was provided provides a synopsis of where other communities are at, again, to kind of meet the housing needs and increase the density.
And this is for new builds, not current existing properties, right?
Correct. It would be for new construction, single-family, two-family, multifamily.
Thank you. Motion to approve the entire?
Thank you. We have a motion by Catnall, seconded by Benhaman. Mr. Delaney?
I had a question on number two. You had a couple of ladies step up to the microphone and speak, and I didn't quite, I couldn't hear all of what they were saying. And then I kind of got confused as to what exactly was going on. And after reading this, I'm still confused. Is the, could you just explain it? I'm sorry.
Yeah, and the, the best way to explain it is with a visual. If you look in the Plan Commission packet, there's a, there's a map, and it identifies a sliver of property. So Aspirus owns two properties. One is their existing clinic. The other, I think formerly, was, was, was another health, healthcare use. The planned development district, which is an overlay district on top of the entire Aspirus property, both the hospital and their adjacent clinics, parking lots, and so forth, is being requested to be expanded because what they're doing is they're carving out a 15-foot strip because their existing clinic building is very, very close to the property line. So they've done a CSM to carve out a 15-foot strip, and they want to add that 15-foot strip to their existing clinic property and then expand the PD district over the top of that 15-foot strip to create consistency throughout their entire zoning.
Okay, so they're, they're expanding it. The, the blue strip that you have in there, that is the expansion. So it's going to be a part of the, if I'm looking at this north to south, this would be the east or the west side property? It's going to become a part of that?
Yeah, so if you, if you reference page seven of the Plan Commission packet, you'll see kind of the, the strip here that's identified, and I can pass this around if you want to see it.
It's in our packets.
Okay. So that's the 15 feet that they're requesting to be removed from the existing parcel, joined to the neighboring parcel, and then the PDD district to expand onto that 15 feet, so it creates a consistent parcel.
Okay, and does this have anything to do with setbacks or anything like that? Because then?
It does, yes. So with, with the addition of the 15 feet, they're, they're now meeting the setback or bringing it into more conformity. I believe it is their intent to, at some point, sell the adjacent lot to the east. So again, before they do that, they wanted to create conformity with both the setbacks, with the PDD overlay district on their existing clinic parcel.
All right, thank you.
Great. Anything further? Mr. Reel?
Thank you, Your Honor. Just, number three, and I, not speaking against, but I'm just looking at one of those five items there. Number four is about that the project should include required grass seeding and tree insulation within one year. My only comment on that would be is, I would rather see the grass and that put in in a shorter time than, you know, than one year. Just to, you know, as I think we can see is that when some of this is done, it becomes overgrown with weeds at times and whatnot. That I, you know, it's, grass is going to be the end result. I would encourage that to go quicker, just from an aesthetic standpoint, so. The other is that, let's see. I guess maybe an overall comment, and that has to do with, I think, of the, I guess, the minutes that we have. And I understand the reason that we do this is that it's kept, I guess, shortened to the point. But it's, there's also in there, many times, it'll say there's been additional comments or, or explained this. And my question or comment with is, where, where are we, where are we carried with what the additional comments are? Or the explanation? Is that somewhere, I guess, does that become part of the, of the fact? Or do we just have basically what's in here that says there was discussion or it was explained? I understand the reason that we're keeping it short, but on the other hand, where, where does that put us if something came up later? With that, just a, you know, it's a general com, here are a couple of comments, questions here. It's something that I've thought about, I guess, many times. And I thought tonight might be, is just probably the, instead of just thinking about it, might be a time to address the, to address the issue. And basically, I, I hope you all follow that, is where, where are we that there's discussion that was, that, you know, the people were understanding what, I guess, took place. But in the future, who's going to know what the understanding was? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Reel. Any additional comments or questions? Okay, seeing none. Please cast your ballots. That motion carried eight As, zero Nays. We're on to item 10, consider for the adoption the action of the standing committees of the common council as follows. A Finance and Property Committee meeting held on October 3rd. Mr. Zachar?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Finance Property Committee meeting, as stated, was held on October 3rd, 2023. All members of the Finance and Property Committee were present. Item one called to order. Chairperson Zachar called the meeting to order at 4:01 PM. Item two, presentation by the Heart of Wisconsin Chamber of Commerce and request for funding from the City of Wisconsin Rapids for 2024 budget. The presentation was given and no action was taken. Item three, consider for approval the agreement for EMS services with the town of Saratoga. It was moved by Bemke, seconded by Benhaman to approve, and the motion carried three to zero. Item number four, consider for approval an agreement for EMS services with the village of Port Edwards. It was moved by Benhaman, seconded by Bemke to approve, and the motion carried. Item five, consider a request from the Park and Recs Department to, to apply for an urban forestry grant through the DNR and to utilize $5,000 from the Park Outlay account. It was moved by Benhaman, seconded by Bemke to approve, and the motion carried. Item six, Budget Amendment Resolution Number Three. It was moved by Bemke, seconded by Benhaman to approve Budget Number Three, Attachment Number Three, and the motion carried. Item seven, Budget Discussions. Finance Director Tim DeSorci gave an update on the 2024 budget. No action was taken. Item eight, Audit of the Bills. It was moved by Bemke, seconded by Benhaman to approve check number 18607 to 18923, and the motion carried. Item nine, set next meeting date. The next meeting date of the Finance Property Committee is scheduled for Tuesday, November 7th, 2023, at 4:00 PM in the council chambers. Item 10, Adjournment. It was moved by Zachar, seconded by Benhaman to adjourn. Motion carried. Meeting was adjourned at 4:39 PM. With that, I make a motion to submit these minutes.
Thank you. We have a motion by Zachar. Is there a second? Seconded by Bemke.
I'd like to hold out three and four.
We have item three and four being requested held out. Everybody good with that? Okay, let me circle those. Mr. Delaney?
Item number two, there was no action taken on that at all, so, where does that stand?
No action item. Yeah, there's, right now, there stands nowhere. Honestly, I'm going to bring it up Thursday, not this item, but at the next committee, the whole meeting, to discuss. How are we going to, you know, like, if you're approving that, is that something you should decide that night? Or at what point are you going to, if you're going to make, because we heard Park and Rec, if you have changes to make there, are you saving it for a certain time, or do you want to make those decisions that night? And so I plan to kind of have an intro discussion on that on Thursday and see what your thoughts are.
So that's a call?
It was just a presentation.
Okay, so there was, I thought there was a request for funds.
There was a request, but there was no action taken, I guess.
All right.
But it's also. But it's also in your budget, so it could be discussed as a budgetary item also. But I think for clarification, and so people kind of know or can kind of plan, maybe that discussion on Thursday will help kind of figure that out. Yeah. Came up with that on my own. Alright, so, Mr. Zacher.
Probably helped.
So on Thursday, are we inviting Stacy to present to the Committee of the Whole again?
No, it would be, since the presentations already happened. But on Thursday, it's just more of a general discussion because you've heard a request from the Heart, who's in the budget. You've heard from Park and Rec and you've heard from the library and nothing's been, and the whole purpose of the Committee of the Whole was to be able, the whole council could then make motions and it's not limited to the Finance Committee and thus that has not happened yet. So, you know, is the library being funded? What the library's requested? Same with the Heart, same with Park and Rec and, or are we saving it up for a special night? So I think that's really what the discussion should be at our next Committee of the Whole is, are you going to take up those budgets and make a decision that night? I've got a lot more I can say on that night, but...
Okay.
But I think that would be the fair time or at least they're there, you know, and then they're aware of what's happening versus doing, lack of transparency, doing it at night that nobody knows we're doing it and that's not fair to say the Heart or anybody else. And I think those should be taken up that night. Well, there's a greater discussion I'd like to have beyond this, but...
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Bemke?
I just have a question. So Thursday night, we're not necessarily doing the Heart, I believe. The way I understood it, it was police and fire.
Correct. So the Heart's not on there, but is that, is that, do you want to?
We can have that discussion as you go through your...
Wasn't there miscellaneous night?
There's been miscellaneous kind of catch-all night. I think that's on, I can't, it's on Tuesday, a Tuesday.
But just so we're clear, Thursday night is police and fire.
Thursday night is police and fire and then my whole purpose was more of a general discussion to see about how you want to go forward to be able to take. Ultimately, in my opinion, they, we should take up how you, the options that were presented on that first night because if you're going to borrow for streets and there's enough money in shared, additional shared revenue to cover the budget, are we having a mute point discussion other than having department heads go through the budget? I think there's a greater discussion here other than just some department budget. Because if you're choosing not to borrow, well, then we got to figure out where that money comes from. But if you're going to borrow and use shared revenue, FEMA and ARPA money, well, you're going to have leftover, you're going to have a surplus if you're going to do that or you borrow less. I think that's really kind of a greater discussion and then if you're deciding not to borrow, well, then you might have to make budget cuts. And I think that's really a priority conversation to have. And then the individual budgets. I think that there's value to have the individual budget discussions and bring department heads in and some of the departments have some increases in their budgets. I think it's worthwhile to have that conversation so everybody in the council understands why those increases are in there. But at the end of the day, are you going to make budget cuts and how are we going to fund it? I think that would be an appropriate conversation. Okay? Thank you for my little opportunity. Mr. Catna?
Thank you. I had a couple of people from the Heart of Wisconsin reach out to me and if that didn't clarify it, I think what's being said is that it hasn't been decided not to fund the requests or to fund. It's part of a greater discussion. And that, in that greater discussion, with the department heads coming in like Catherine and Jake did last week, I almost feel like I need that opportunity to go through their budget with them before I can just look at the numbers and then come back and say, on that night and say, well, I think this should go. I kind of need to hear what they have to say. So part of that piece we'll talk about, but I would just say to those people who reached out regarding the Heart that it's part of a greater discussion and we just haven't decided yet. You're not out of funding or funded yet.
Exactly, and you know Stacy being here, you know, it's just the unknown, you know, is all of a sudden something going to happen here? And then they're her and the border trying to figure out, okay, now what? And I think for transparency purposes, it's important that they have that opportunity to know that this night, we're going to discuss it and this is the decision. Or at least they can participate in that or be here to be able to participate. Mr. Delaney?
Can I hold out six?
Yeah, everybody good with that? Item six. Budget Amendment Resolution? Okay, on the balance of the...
So I'm sorry, then, so in theory, if we were to talk about that particular item, since there are people here that thought we might be talking about it tonight, wouldn't that be appropriate to talk about that particular item if that was one we were going to talk about on that miscellaneous night since it's not police and fire?
You lost me on that one, Dean.
Okay, so this, this particular item, the, using that as an example, the Heart of Wisconsin, $25,000. And at this point, it's in the budget. And so our discussion along with the year, the other items that we'll be talking about is primarily that night is a police and fire night. This coming Thursday. But then you said following Tuesday was a more miscellaneous where there'll be a number of different items. Wouldn't that be if the Heart wanted to watch it? That either online or here, that would be that night more likely?
I think that would probably make sense being a miscellaneous type of night. Unfortunately, I'm not going to be there for that night, but... But yeah, it's miscellaneous kind of, there's a bunch of smaller budgets on there.
Thank you.
Thank you. Alright, we're holding out, Catna's holding out three and four and Mr. Delaney's holding out six. So motion on the balance of the report is to approve. Seeing no further discussion, please cast your ballots. That motion carried eight A's, zero N's. Mr. Catna?
Thank you. So I'll speak to these together. I believe they may need to be, if potentially actions taken, voted on separate because they're listed separate. But the first question's for Tim. What does a city resident pay per capita towards our emergency services?
Well, based on the...
We got to remember this tally T about that.
Based on the 2024 levy that supports the EMS fund and that's all the expenditure less the revenues from ambulance runs in the contracted areas, based on the per capita, that comes to $53,000 and some change per capita. But the allocation of the staffing between fire and EMS is split 50-50. But I, you know, I don't know if that necessarily reflects the actual staffing cost just to provide EMS services as opposed to fire services because our staffing at the fire department are cross-trained. They both, they serve both functions. So I kind of hesitate to, what the accuracy of that number actually is unless we went through a deep analysis to really, you know, separate out what our staffing cost is just to provide EMS.
What if it was 50%? If it was 50%, what's the per capita?
That is a 50-50 split with the staffing cost. 50% of the wages and benefits get allocated, the fire department, 50% to EMS.
Okay, because it's proposed that Port and Saratoga pay $25 per capita in 2024, 2025, and then '26 and 2026, 2027. So what, if it's, if it's got to be the 50% mark, where do Rapid Citizens taxpayers fall in what they pay?
That would be the $53.
We pay $53.
Per capita, based on the levy.
If we went at 50%. So on both these items, there's no way, all these contracts that come in front of us that are going to have the city taxpayers bearing the weight of our neighbor communities, that I'm ever going to approve a contract that has them paying less than what the people who live in my district and the city in general do. So I'm going to refer this, I'm going to make a motion to refer this back to Finance to give Todd some time to work with the neighboring municipalities on this agreement. Because I'm not, this city residents pay more for this service than what someone in Saratoga or Port Edwards would pay. It's completely wrong by us to approve anything of that as their representative.
So we have a motion by Mr. Catna to send back this back to Finance? I'm sorry, did you want to push your motion button?
Yeah, and if I can put them together, I'll do that if I need to separate them.
Oh, for both of them?
Yeah.
Okay. So you want them for both, right? Individual, but do we can do them together or individually? Okay.
Yeah, I mean, the comments stand towards both. $53 per residence proposing Saratoga and Port paid 25. They're listed separate, the different communities, but they, I'll make the motion together.
Alright, and we have a second by Veneman. Mr. Zacher?
I just want to know, I guess, Chief Akers, did you have anything that you wanted to?
Absolutely. You got to realize that what the citizens of the Wisconsin Rapids receive for that is far and above what the citizens of those outlying areas are. Those citizens in the outline areas are getting EMS coverage only. You know, you got to look at the things that the citizens are paying for in the City of Wisconsin Rapids. Programs, standby at football games, CPR classes, CPR classes for the lifeguards and first aid for the lifeguards. I mean, I can go on and on and on. There is so much more the citizens of the city receive for that funding than what the people out in the outlying area are. The citizens also use about 75% of that on EMS calls. I did go through some numbers and over 3,000 of last year, over 3,000 calls are in the city. Less than 1,000 are in the outlying area. When we're out in that outlying area, there's two medics on a rig out there. They're out there for about an hour at a time. The two townships we're talking about, Tim can probably solidify us. I think it's 312 calls is what we were looking at. Is that correct? Between those two townships last year. So you take the payment, the wages of two medics, at about 38 bucks an hour is what they get an hour for about an hour call out to there, times 312. And you look at what those two townships are paying for retainer fees. So with the new increase for Toga is they're going from $37,000 to $134,500 for a retainer fee. For the Village of Port, they're, I don't have that one in front of me, but they're more than doubling themselves. I'm going to tell you that if we take this back to those townships and we tell them we're increasing that, they're going to tell us to take a flying you-know-what. We are ready, our $8 per capita, more than the closest bidder on those contracts. The reason they take us is because of the service we give them. Because we give them the best EMS service in all of central Wisconsin and we've given them that from the beginning. If you're not going to, when we, when we did this two years ago, somebody asked the question, are we going to bring the other ones on to this right now like that? And we said, no, we wanted to keep them separate. But the intention was in two years, when these two come on, we were going to bring them on at the same rate. In two years, when the contracts come due on the other ones, is when we were going to relook at the per capita and bring it up as needed. I think you're looking at, you're not looking at the whole picture here. I'll tell you right now that those, those outlying areas are good about what they're paying on their bills. You know, when you look at Medicare, Medicaid, that's the same whether you're in the city or out. We have a lot of people that are paying full bills out in those areas. So I think, I think it's a, the realization is what the benefit is. You know, you take away that, those contracts out there and the income from that, just the retainer fees, I believe it's something like $347,000 on the retainer fees from all the outlying areas right now, where are you going to find that in the levy when we take that away? Because we increased staff and that, and they actually, that increase in those contracts down there actually helped for that increase of staff. That increase of staff isn't going to go away. We haven't, we haven't added the staff since 1990 until last year. We still need three more. We're waiting for a safer grant. You take those away, where are you going to find the money for that? It's not going to help the call volume because the call volume in 1990, when we were at three less than what we are now, was 1,000 per, 1,000 per year. You take away even what we have out and it's still like 3,500 calls per year. That's just EMS. That's not counting the fire calls. What we're counting here are just EMS calls. You're getting close to 4,000 calls or better in just than a city with fire and EMS. When we got two ambulances out and we don't have enough people to fight fires and we've been there before and the people that sat in that presentation we gave when we justified putting those extra people on, saw what happened, showing up to a multifamily complex with one person because the rest are on ambulance calls and they were all in the city? You explain to the citizens why we don't have people then. Because we're not going to have the money to pay for them. You're taking $347,000 extra into the city that isn't going to be there when we don't have those contracts. And if we go to them and we tell them, we expect you to pay $53 per capita, there ain't no way it's going to happen.
Mr. Catna?
But that's what we're paying and that's when we split it up 50%. So I mean, you just mentioned that two medics out there at $28 an hour for an hour, that's $56. So they're not even reaching the per capita. I, this isn't anything but a financial aspect of looking at the fact that we pay $53 per capita if, just by going by a general number, it could be more. Splitting it in half and we're offering contracts to neighboring communities at half that and the rest is bared by the Rapids taxpayer. Where would we find that money? I mean, we had that money when we went through this the first time. You stated that we wouldn't need additional personnel to make these calls. We went over that and now we have additional personnel. I don't want to get into the doom and gloom of what happens if we don't take the contracts. It's just on the point that Rapid Citizens are paying more per capita than the neighboring communities and that's not right. They should either come up to what we're paying and then we can offer them the service or it doesn't make sense for us to continue as a city bearing all these costs. We're seeing it with every service we share that the citizens here bear the majority of the costs while we offer everybody else a better deal. And it's, it's got to end. I mean, they just have to pay what we pay. That's not asking too much. And it is a great service, you're right, and I hope they realize that and decide to pay the same amount we pay for it.
Don't confuse what we told you when we were doing the contracts originally was that we wouldn't have to add the staff. The additions to staff, and I know you were gone after that, was a direct result of something different than that coming on. Actually, that additions to staff, those three actually were accentuated by some of the money we made off of those contracts. That additions to staff came from inability to be able to have people on fire scenes and that's where that came from. That was after you left, I understand that. So don't confuse when I said we didn't have to have additions to staff and, and actually, that wasn't true either because when we brought that, it was what we were going to make off that was going to add that last 11th person to the tier and that was part of the agreement. So don't confuse those two, I guess, is what I'm saying. Those other three we're talking about came on a, on a different motion and was brought forth to the HR and Finance Committee and put in the budget last year. So don't confuse those two. If you're going to take this back to Finance and expect to go back to these other, these other townships and ask for $53, we might as well just tell them we're not going to give them service because they are not going to, they're not going to do it. Both of those townships have used all the money, the extra shared revenue money they got through the Act 12 just to pay for the difference from what they were paying before to now. You got to realize they went from $10 per capita up to 25. That's a lot of money for towns, small township. They're using all of that extra shared revenue just to pay for that EMS. So I just want you to know the facts.
Yeah, no, I appreciate it.
I have, I have no intentions myself of going back to those townships and saying they want $53 because I know what the answer is. I think, I think you should reconsider. We're going to lose some good income. What we're missing on this is the extra money we make off of those EMS calls. Maybe Tim has those numbers. That's the income we're not going to have, is the extra money we make off of the EMS calls out there. Don't confuse the retainers with that $25 an hour I was talking about either. The $25 an hour is, I'm giving you an idea of what it costs and it wasn't 25, it was 35. Actually, I think it's 38 is what a five-year medic makes. For those two hours, that's at $76 and there's some wear and tear on the ambulance, I get that. But retainer fees are just to have us in place to be able to come out there and lock us in. When we go out, those, those patients are still getting, you know, bills through their insurance and stuff like that. That's still income coming into there. Those numbers... Those numbers, Tim and I were trying to work on. It'd be nice if we'd have been with LifeQuest for a complete year. It's hard to to get a a real true number since we've gone to LifeQuest, but I I think you're, we're missing the bullet. And again, I I go back to, I don't believe fifty-fifty is an accurate number. Your fire service, that's why it used to be seventy-thirty, your fire service costs you a lot more. There's, it's more, it's more in equipment, there's more training, there's more equipment per person. You guys know what new fire trucks are. I mean, ladder trucks and and engines, when you start replacing, the cost of having a fire service is much greater than the cost of your EMS service. So I just hope you reconsider. Again, I say, all the things that citizens pay more money for are, is a lot of value that the citizens out there are not getting. They're getting an ambulance to come out and in. The citizens in the city of Wisconsin Rapids get a much, much more through all the programs. Our community risk reduction program we started this year, dealing with the elderly, working with ADRC, to be able to put them in place with people that help when they have problems, they can't live by themselves. All those programs don't happen in the outer area. The outer area gets two medics out there, take care of them, and transport them to a hospital. So I just hope you reconsider, because if you're looking for fifty-three dollars an hour, I don't want to be the one to go out there to tell them, we can have somebody else go out there, because they're going to say no.
I'm just looking for what the citizens pay per capita, and we can look in, I I hate to put more on Tim, but if we need to look in more what that number is, I, no matter which way you slice it, it's going to be more. And I I, you said they spent all their funds. I I don't understand how that's the, our taxpayers' issue. I mean, if they can afford it, great. If they can't, I don't want to be giving services to neighboring communities where our taxpayer, our voters are paying more than they are. And it it just, we we have to cut it to an end at some point, and even, this contract needs to go back to finance regardless. When you look at the increase over this five-year contract, I mean, we're going up a dollar every two years. You know your expenses are going to be going up more than that over two years. I mean, it doesn't even, I have the document from when we first went over this. There was communities that provided service to neighboring communities in twenty-twenty-one that were getting much more than twenty-five dollars an hour per capita. I I still have that. Marshfield provides to towns for, back in twenty-twenty-one, it was thirty-two dollars. So either way, we're we're under where we need to be, and I'm sending it back to finance to give that committee and yourself the opportunity to bring it closer to what the city taxpayers paying.
All right, I'm sorry, is that logic? Go ahead, Tim.
Sure, I just got a, you know, I did an analysis of, you know, what it costs, you know, the actual out-of-pocket costs to provide EMS services to both the Village of Port Edward and Town of Saratoga. And I looked at, you know, the staffing costs. I also looked at, you know, other pay. We have ambulance pay, critical care pay. I looked at our ambulance supplies, our our EMS software costs. I also looked at, you know, ambulance vehicle maintenance, fuel costs, and I even factored in depreciation on the ambulances. And based, you know, and kind of looked at our total calls, and then gave up a, you know, per run cost on average to provide EMS services. And the cost to provide, based on the three hundred and twelve runs, the the, those out-of-pocket costs are about a hundred and two thousand, two hundred and nine dollars. The retainer fees for just, for for them, for us, having that service available to them is a hundred and twenty-seven thousand, one hundred for Town of Saratoga. And forty-three thousand, four hundred for the Village of Port Edward, which is a total contract revenue of a hundred and seventy thousand, five hundred. I also had LifeQuest run the calls that we have for those two areas. And came up with what the actual gross revenue, the revenue that we collected from those, and from both of those is about a hundred and fifty-five thousand, three hundred and eighty-nine. So if you subtract off, so we have total revenue of three hundred and twenty-five, eight hundred and eighty-nine dollars, subtract off those audit, you know, those run costs. We have a net revenue of two hundred and twenty-three thousand, six hundred and eighty dollars, which goes to offset, you know, the costs that we have, that we have to provide to our citizens. So that being said, also, you know, keep in mind that if we decide to not do these contracted areas, because kind of once we went down this path. Those revenues are then offsetting what we have to levy for EMS services. So if we weren't going to say, do these contracts in twenty-twenty-four, we have to increase the EMS levy revenue by two hundred and twenty-three or find corresponding expenditure reductions just to offset not doing these two contracted areas. And then also, you know, obviously with the timing of this, it doesn't mesh well, because obviously we're right in the middle of the budget. You know, these revenues are factored into the budget. And so, you know, depending on how, what the decision is made, and the timing of that, and with the timing of when we have to adopt the budget, could be, could be problematic.
Okay, Mr. Austin, sorry about that.
Yeah, Chief, you mentioned the the second lower bidder, eight dollars per capital less for these contracts. Can you cover where where you came up with that information, how recent that was, how accurate that is?
I was told that by one of the townships that, one of the townships didn't even take a second bid, because they were, they're so happy with our service and the idea that they're getting paramedics all the time. And the other one told us that the next closest bidder was eight dollars or less, but yet they still took us.
Good, Mr. Austin? Okay. Any further discussion? The motion is to send it back to finance. Okay, seeing no further discussion, please cast your ballots. That motion carried five As to three nays. We are moving on to item six, Mr. Delaney.
I do understand what this is. I was just wondering if there, there's a couple line items that I definitely voted against on this, and I I just don't feel comfortable approving the payment for like the other city property and the Humane Society, which I had originally voted against. I just had a, want to know if we could possibly strike those out, or if everybody just wants to go ahead with it. It's up to you guys. I'll, I'm going to vote no on it if it's part of it.
Tim?
Well, I mean, the the payments have already been made, so this is just adjusting the budget to reflect the actual amount spent. So I mean, the, so the expenditures already occurred. This is just the budget adjustment to to cover those.
So there's nothing we can do about it?
No.
It's bad. We gotta, we gotta.
Well, once we approved the payments and we made the payment, now we're adjusting the budget to reflect that additional payment.
Sounds good.
All right, what are your wishes on item six, on the budget resolution? Uh, Mr. Bemke. So we have Bemke making a motion to approve. Was Zachary seconding? Any further discussion on budget resolution? Did you have something, Tim?
The wheels are turning in my head based on the the previous action, so I'll just vote on this, I guess.
Okay, all right, seeing no further discussion, please cast your ballots. That motion carried six As to two nays. We are on to item B, Public Works Committee meeting held on October fifth, Mr. Rome.
Okay. Public Works Committee met on Thursday, October fifth, twenty-twenty-three, in the council chambers at City Hall. All members were present. Others attending are listed below. Item one was called a meeting to order, was called to order at four P M. Item two, review the engineering and street department activity reports. Reports were reviewed. Item three, review and consider approval of a public art crosswalk at the intersection of Lincoln Street and Birch Street, Peach Street. Motion by Austin, seconded by Pollock, to approve the public arts crosswalk. That motion carried three to zero. Item four, consider a preliminary resolution for public work improvements on McKinley Street between Eighth Avenue North and Fourteenth Avenue North, proposed for construction in twenty-twenty-five. There's a motion and a second to approve the preliminary resolutions for public works improvements. That motion carried three to zero. Item five was to review the referral list. The list was reviewed. I believe we didn't take anything off, if my memory is right. Item six, next meeting date, the next scheduled meeting would be Thursday, October, October, November ninth at five P M. Item seven was adjourned, there's a motion and a second to adjourn at four twenty-eight P M, and that motion carried three to zero. And with that, Your Honor, I move for adoption of the report.
Thank you, Mr. Rome. We have a motion by Rome, seconded by Pollock. Mr. Delaney?
Can I hold out three?
Uh, with the holdout of item three, if everyone's good with that? Yes. Any other discussion on the balance of the report, holding out item three by Mr. Delaney? Okay, seeing none, please cast your ballots. Let the clerk catch up. Mr. Catna? Oh, no problem, thank you. That motion carried eight As, zero nays. Uh, item three, Mr. Delaney?
Okay, on item three, it's a, the city is partnering with nonprofit, and I've, I've, oh, I don't know how exactly to put this. Okay. The nonprofit, in in my opinion, is not anything that shares my values or the majority of my constituents. I want to know why we can't do this without bringing in outside nonprofits and have the local people take care of the crosswalks. The design is mediocre, but I don't understand why we have to go to nonprofits outside of the city.
Did you want further details on the project?
I know all about the project.
Okay.
I I just want to know why we have to partner with nonprofits outside of the city to do this work when we could do it ourselves.
So this this somewhat has stemmed from a relationship where our office led in the creation of a kind of arts, and a policy and place-making strategy. And so that partnership has evolved to where this entity had done some other artwork within buildings within the city and surrounding communities. And had questioned the opportunity to do some artwork on city infrastructure. Many other communities are embracing arts within, you know, other means, we've discussed roundabouts in the past. And so this was kind of their, a response to their request and working with them to align artwork with our existing walkway that was identified on our wayfinding sign project. And I think to answer your question further, I don't believe this is a priority within the engineering or streets department, and they can certainly respond. But I I do think it does add value to the community, especially if the artwork integrates the history of the community or ties to some other, you know, initiative or, you know, the the paper mill. So I, you know, we're in support of this. There's no cost associated. They're going to be fundraising for the project, and they'll be using high-quality materials so that it hopefully lasts for some time.
So is there a group or a committee that decides on approval of the artwork, or is it whatever they want to put down for artwork?
So they provided a rough example within the, well, we included it within the memo that went to Public Works. That may, you know, change slightly, but given the Public Works approval, that's what you see is is likely what you're going to get there for the crosswalk.
Okay, because you had talked about others. So if others come forward, would the, would those go to Public Works for approval?
Yeah, so the the original intent was to try to do multiple crosswalks on Lincoln, given the proximity to Witter Park in the downtown. Given the costs, though, of the materials, which is pretty, pretty high-quality stuff and costly, they elected to do one first. If that's successful, I think there'll be opportunity to do more, and we would bring those back to the committee for further review.
Thank you. What is council's wishes? So we have a motion by Catna to approve the item, seconded by Austin. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please cast your ballots. That motion carried seven As, one Nay. Run item C, which is Human Resources Committee held, meeting held on October tenth. Mr. Bemke.
Thank you, Mayor. Human Resources met on Tuesday, October tenth, at one thirty P M in the first floor conference room at City Hall. Item one, Chair President Bemke called the meeting to order at one thirty P M. Item two, discuss and consider for approval, proposed changes by, to the pay provisions policy. See the attachments. There was a motion by Catna, seconded by Delaney, to approve the proposed changes to the pay provisions policy. Motion carried three, zero. Item three, discuss and consider for approval, a new wage schedule to be effective January first, two thousand and twenty-four, contingent upon budget approval. See the attachments. Motion by Catna, seconded by Bemke, to approve the new wage schedule as presented, including the grading of positions and the movement through the schedule based on the, upon the time periods listed as provided in the pay provisions policy. With the schedule to be effective January first, two thousand and twenty-four, all contingent upon budget approval. Present employees will be placed on the schedule pursuant to option one, with the employee being placed at the step closest to their current salary that doesn't provide for less than their current pay. Any general, any general wage increase for two thousand and twenty-four will be reflected in the schedule. Motion carried two to one. See attached schedule. Item four, discuss and consider for approval, the setting of salary for elected position of mayor for the two thousand and twenty-four to two thousand and twenty-six term. Motion by Delaney, seconded by Bemke, to keep the salary for the elected position of mayor for the two thousand and twenty-four to two thousand and twenty-six term as is, with the general wage increases provided by city policy. Motion carried three to zero. Item number five, discuss and consider for approval, a general wage increase for the nonrepresented employees of the, of the city to be effective January first, two thousand and twenty-four. There was a motion by Delaney, seconded by Catna, to approve a three percent general wage increase for the nonrepresented employees to this, of the city to be effective January first, two thousand and twenty-four. Motion carried three to zero. Item six was adjournment, motion made by Delaney, seconded by Catna to adjourn. Motion carried three, zero. Meeting adjourned at two twenty-seven P M, and with that, I will submit this for approval.
Thank you. We have a motion by Bemke. Is there a second? Can you hit your button?
As soon as, there, I got it.
And seconded by Catna, Mr. Delaney?
I'd like to hold out item three, please.
Item three, item three, Patrick. Mr. Rome?
Thank you, Your Honor. Uh, just, an item four could explain that, I guess, the amount and whatnot. That's the salary for the mayor.
So the mayor's salary is, it's been set as it is, but then any elected official, whatever you approve for the non-union rated salary increase like this, like this year, you have set for three percent, all in not, all the, by ordinance, it's by ordinance, correct? That, or practice, or policy, that those elected officials then also get, would get that three percent. But not Alderman. We know who works hard here. Sorry about that. For the balance of the reports, any further discussion? Holding out item three?
Hold out five.
Yeah, Jake Catna, holding out item five. Alright. So on the balance of the report, please cast your ballots. That motion carried eight A's, zero N's. Um, Mr. Delaney, item three.
Okay, so this is something that I had asked the other people to, uh, send suggestions to Ryan, uh, last month about they're doing a new pay scale. I think the pay scale is great. I think that they have done a lot with it. Uh, some of you guys have sent them suggestions, and they took those into account to account for longevity. So the pay scale is good. It's really unfair as far as longevity. There is no consideration at all for how long somebody has worked at the city. So they put that together. There's option one and option two, which is in your, in your packet. Option three was discussed and discarded. And as far, I would like to make a motion to approve, this item, except for, we're going to use option two, which would include the longevity of the, uh, people. We had a very long discussion about it, and I think that it would be, uh, a good thing. What it does is it moves people up a step or a few steps based on how long they've been in that position with the city. As far as the steps go, there is a, a copy of it here. There's not a huge difference from one step to the next. It's like thirty cents or sixty cents. Tim says it's one point five percent from one step to the next step. So it's not like we are giving away the farm. And that's my motion, just to, to, if you guys would consider option two.
Can you hit your button? So a motion, is there a second? And we have a second by Mr. Zachary. Uh, Mr. Catna?
Thank you. It's, it's hard to put all this into context unless you were at or watched the H R meeting. But I think the most important thing to consider between these different options is the wage step scale that was worked on for years was proposed. And in that wage schedule, no one is getting a wage reduction. They have the opportunity to work their way through the steps. And essentially, uh, Patrick disagrees and, and says that they should be placed in the step that, based on the years of service they've been here. The only problem with this is that there's, there's a cost associated with it, and those costs are available. I'm sure Tim could speak to them. But of course, they continue to step through, uh, the wage scale, even if we were to place them where they've currently been, which is an added cost, uh, in the amount of thousands per year to the city, and it, and it goes up every year versus what's proposed, which is putting the wage schedule in place and, and having the step process. So I, I think it needs to be a conversation of what Patrick's saying. He's talking about, uh, longevity and, and their time here. But I think more important to that is the cost and how we can afford that. I mean, we are in the midst of budget discussions, um, trying to balance the budget, and this adds to it. And then in item five, we're also giving it a general wage increase. I won't go into that until we pull it out. But I, I think we do a good job at, uh, giving our non-union represented employees similar, whether you want to call them COLA adjustments, cost of living. Uh, we give them wage increases already. I mean, they do tend to move. And at, at some point, if thi- if this were a business, we would have to look at it and say, as much as we would love to pay for longevity, uh, we are bonding for debt. We are looking for money in every department's budget. We're trying to find all these areas. So I think financially, I just don't agree that we can do this right now. And I think we should go with the original motion that was approved at the committee level, which is to stick with the original proposed wage schedule. So I'll have to vote no to this, and then motion, the original one.
If it fails. Um, I think also to point out, for option two, it's long, it's, uh, time in current position, not time with city. Uh, Mr. Bemke?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, first of all, I think longevity is recognized in both of these options. It's just not recognized immediately in the one option. And I, I guess the, the cost, I think, was probably a determining factor in this. And if Ryan doesn't mind, maybe he can just run through the differences, or Tim, either one.
I, I kind of finished up today. You know, at the, at the original, at the H R committee, when we discussed option two and three, um, I just costed out what the implementation cost in two thousand twenty-four would be for option, uh, two and three. And I put together the, the five year like I did with the option one and the, the current wage scale. So obviously, in, in year one, for option two and three, the implementation cost is a little bit higher because you're obviously moving people, you know, several steps in that initial implementation. However, a lot of those people that are implemented are now higher up in the scale, and they're now, they're approaching the eighteen month, twenty-four month scale, because you go to eight, the steps, the time between steps, uh, beginning in step eleven through step, uh, fourteen is eighteen months, and then step fifteen and sixteen is twenty-four months. So then, as you kind of go through, you can see that the step increases for option two and three start to become less than what it is under option one, which is the one that was approved at the H R committee. So when you just look at, on the, on the second page, um, option two i- is roughly ninety-six thousand dollars more than option one over the five-year period, and option three is about ninety-eight thousand dollars more than the current, the option that was recommended at the H R committee. And then on the back, I kind of put together just a brief synopsis of what the different options entail.
If I could offer, um, just thank you to Tim for putting that all together, because I think it was kind of eye-opening that the costs of two and three, as the years go on, become less and less. I think it provides the opportunity potentially to really, really get it right for everybody and all included. For what I, I was, um, thinking would be way off the other way, somewhat what, uh, Alderman, Catna had alluded to. You know, after one year, three hundred thousand, then it's going to be five hundred, six hundred, seven hundred. And now that you see this, it actually somewhat goes in reverse, um, where option one becomes more expensive as it goes on, and option two becomes not as expensive as option one. So I think this proposed scale, it, it may provide, I think it does provide the opportunity to recognize the longevity of employees in a current, in their current position, along with allowing employees to now move through the appropriate steps as you move forward. So, um, thank you.
Uh, go ahead, Mr. Catna.
Thank you. So if you look at your document, let's, we'll just focus in on two thousand twenty-four, so it's going to be on the first page, the second one there. The first one to look at is current wage scale. So that's where we're at right now, currently. If we just state as is, then implement anything new. Is that correct? Okay. So option, option one, which that's what we moved with at H R. That alone is providing us an additional cost next year of a hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars. Option two is three hundred and eight. Option three is two hundred and ninety-five. So we're going from seventy-one thousand, two hundred and twenty-one. Just the option two, we're already taking on an increase of a hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars. What Patrick's motion is for option two would take that from seventy-one to three hundred and eight. So this motion and this decision is going to lead into the rest of our discussions of where we're finding two hundred and thirty thousand dollars to do option two. It sounds, it sounds great, and I, as I said in the H R meeting, it would be nice to be able to do that, but financially, I, I just don't know how we get there. Um, I, I am interested in that it decreases over time, but it's still such a large upfront cost to get there. So I guess before we would move to go to that, I, I would make it part of the larger discussion of how we're going to fund it, which we don't do at H R, because we only make H R decisions. But that should be considered when you're making your choice.
Thank you. So the motion is second to approve option two. Uh, Mr. Bemke?
I, I don't disagree with what's been said. I guess, as you look down the, the chart, though, I mean, this, it gets to be a pretty good gap as you get to year five in the cost. So I guess the initial cost is upfront, um, but it's cheaper in the long run. Um, I don't disagree, and probably more of a question for Tim, but, uh, going forward in the budget, um, do we have to know tonight?
Tim will say it based on priorities.
I, I mean, I mean technically, I mean, you can do what you want. I mean, obviously, I got to place something in the budget, you know, but obviously, uh, as night progresses here, the, the original budget estimate is kind of now changing on a item-by-item basis. I mean, now, we, you know, not to be, but we've put three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars of revenue at risk, you know, by not approving those contracts. And as there's, I understand everything, I'm just saying the financial impact of that. And then obviously, going forward, if our plan is to, with the other contracts, you know, that's going to be significant revenue. You know, when you look at, you know, those contracted areas in a one year, bring hundred, three hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars of just ambulance-run revenue, plus another three hundred and eight thousand of contract revenue. So, yeah, I mean, it comes when, if you're really talking about affordability, you know, when you start reducing your revenues and your levy doesn't go up, yeah, it, it's going to fall on the expenditure side, where we're going to have to make cuts on the expenditure side to, to afford some of this stuff.
Thank you. So we have a motion to second to approve option item two? Yeah?
I guess I just wanted to comment, as I was kind of involved in the, um, this long saga here of our wage study. Um, and I don't, this doesn't apply to me, so I, I don't have any dog in this fight, so, um, but I, I really, I really like option two. I think that the intent of the study, if you recall, I mean, it's not only, it's not only about, you know, new employees and promoted employees. I think it was about retaining employees. And option two, you know, over the five years, is pretty, you know, it's, it's a little more, but it, it's pretty similar than option one. And it really, and it puts every employee on the same footing as all the employees that we're going to be hiring in the future and promoting. And, or promoting. So I, I just think it's, it's, it's more fair to our employees. Otherwise, no matter how long they've been here, or how long they've been in that position, and no matter what grade they were at, they're not, you know, they're just going to get their same pay for next year. Whereas next year, we might hire someone that has their same job, and that person might be moved ahead of them. And they're going to have to wait, you know, eighteen, or twelve months, twelve months, then maybe even eighteen months, twenty-four months to, to move. Um, so I just think the option two, I think is, you know, I, it's great for future employees and promoted employees to have this schedule and to implement it and to allow people to move and, and to stick with it. But you have how many employees? A hundred? I mean, I guess when you take out our unions, who are really not, they're benefiting because they're going to be able to move through the steps finally, but they're not being recognized for, um, the time that they put in their, in the position. And the next person that's hired in that position is definitely going to be more ahead than they are. Um, so I just think it's a kind of a fairness thing, and I think it, it's in line kind of with the, the whole idea of the, what the, what the schedule was supposed to be about. Thank you.
I guess I'll speak too. As a, as an elected official, that is also a taxpayer. Um, I have the benefit with, as with Kyle, we talk to employers and we meet with employers, and we understand the, the struggle that employers have to fill positions, and we see it across across our community. And I think importantly, it is very important that we do what we can to retain our employees, because there are plenty of other jobs in the private sector that they could go to. And maybe they might not have the same benefits, they might have to travel, but if they choose to make more money, they have that option easily in the private sector. And seeing the, the five-year cost and, yeah, upfront, there's a, a greater, a more of a cost. However, at the end of the, at the end of five years, it's very roughly similar. And so I, I think, like Sue brought up, you know, the whole purpose of this was to, I agree, retain employees and recognize the value that our seasoned employees do have a greater value because of that experience. And, yeah, you get somebody new, there's, there's a cost. There's a cost to hire somebody, there's a cost to train them, and there's a cost to, for them to get up to speed. You know, our newest employees aren't going to plow the roads as faster, as fast as our experienced employees. So, and, and that's all across the city. So I, I also support option two. Thank you. Clerk's turn. Seeing no further discussion, please cast your ballots. So that motion carried six A's, two N's. And we're on to item five, Mr. Catna?
Thank you. Discussed previously that if we take on the increase of moving with the different option than what was proposed, which we just did, that we would need to reconsider the three percent general wage increase. EMS, that's going back to finance aside. What, what's the cost of the three percent general wage increase across the board? And it'll be more now that we're putting them in a higher schedule too. So, I mean, if you just have a number, I'm just trying to tally this all up to let everybody know how much money we're spending.
I think at two and a half, I had about two hundred and forty-six thousand, so probably about two hundred and seventy thousand.
Okay, so we're taking on an additional, what'd you have in the budget? For, did you have option one or the current skill?
Option one.
Okay. So compared to option one, we, it was just voted to take on an additional, uh, one, uh, one hundred and fifty-three thousand dollars. So I think we should send this back to H R to look at one more time if we can do a full three percent. Um, I, I wouldn't want to grant it tonight, and then us be in the budget and try to figure out where we're going to pull that from. So I, I would just motion to send this item back to the Human Resource Committee. Can someone hit my button for me? Thank you.
So is there a second? Okay, seeing none, that motion dies for a lack of second. Mr. Delaney?
Tim, when you did the original budget, did you do it at three percent? Or did you do it at a different number, such as two and a half percent?
I did it at two and a half percent.
Two and a half percent. I'm fine with, uh, Two and a half percent. I'm fine with, uh, um, that two and a half percent, I think, would be a, a fair given take on this. But I'd like to leave it up to some of the other council members.
Mr. Catnaugh?
Thank you.
Uh, I'm sorry, Mr. Delaney, were you done? Okay.
It, my idea of, uh, our motion that failed to send it back to Human Resources, I thought it would give it time to simply deduct the amount from going to option one to option two as a percentage from the three percent, just to offset it. But I know that math can't be done tonight. So that, that was why I originally did that. It wasn't with the intention to completely get rid of three percent. I just thought we could offset that cost in the budget with perhaps the three percent we decided at H. R. because that was decided after we had motion and approved option one. So we're kind of doubling up on increases here through the H. R. agenda. And I think maybe we should just go back and see that hundred and fifty-three thousand, does it end up to be a, a two point eight percent or a two point seven? And we can be looking at the same cost we were looking at coming out of that meeting and do both things, that one that just passed and, and one that's, we're discussing right now. So that, that was the reason for my motion. I don't know how we can get back to that or how that can be calculated right now. But I, I just feel like we should get back to that number and that would be a good balance of being able to do both things.
So I guess my question is, is the, we have two separate issues here. And I, and to me, the wage adjustment doesn't change just because we approved option one, two, or three. It doesn't change that our wage adjustment isn't keeping up with inflation and cost of living right now. It's a fraction of that. So for me, it's really, to me, they're two separate issues. And, and if you're going to try to pay for one for the other, then you're just defeating them both, in my opinion. Just my thoughts.
Okay, so the reason that I'm fine with two and a half percent is, one, it is what Tim had originally figured for this year's budget, for next year's budget. And for two, everybody is getting placed into a, a new bracket and it is no less pay than what they are at and it's going to be a little bit more. I mean, it's going to be, I don't know exactly percentages, but nobody's getting any less than what they were making last year. So that, that's what is my reasoning.
So is there a motion in there or is that?
I would really like to hear from some of the Aldermen, especially Tom Rehm.
So does anyone else have any thoughts or? I think Mr. Rehm was going to speak, but, uh, no, I'm sorry, Jay's up first, then, then Tom's due in a second. Yep. Oh, okay. Go ahead, Tom. Or two, you guys can wrestle.
I was, I was just going to say, I'm, I'm in agreement that they're two separate things. And if you offset one with the other, and if that were to continue to be somewhat of a practice going forward, and, and correct me if I'm wrong, but it'll be less and less time before we're back in the same place again. Because your schedule is supposed to be the schedule, not keep, your, your general wage increase is to recognize, you know, or try to as close as possible, cost of inflation or, or cost of living, whatever we want to call it. But the schedule is the schedule and that needs to be reflective as well. So if you offset one with the other for say, two to three years, that schedule's going to be behind. And I guess, I, I guess I'm just saying I'm in agreement with what the mayor said on that. So, thank you.
Mr. Rehm?
Thank you. Um, this is one that I've, uh, over all the years that I've, uh, I've never been totally in favor of the step wage schedule type of thing. And I think I've mentioned that before. I think there's a different way to do it. Um, I know a lot of effort was put into this, uh, and I commented during as this was going on. And I think there's a way to pay people at a wage that they would want to stay unless they decided, hey, I don't want to do this no more and they look for somewhere else or try a different job within the, uh, within the city. It's just, like I said, I, I've never been one that's been totally in favor of this wage schedule that we've lived by for, I don't know how long.
So that's all been approved? So we're actually on the, we're just on the, oh, okay.
I know. So, and that's, that's why it has to take it on commenting. And, because that's my comment is that I, I'm just not, I'm not in favor of the wage schedule. So I'll let it go at that.
No, that sounds good. Okay, anybody else? What are your wishes? Uh, we have a motion by Bemke. Is what? We have a motion to approve the item as presented? Okay, we have a motion to approve the item as presented. Is there a second? We have a second by Veneman. Is there any further discussion? Okay, seeing none, cast your ballots. So that may, motion carried six A's, two N's. All right, we're through the H. R. Report. I just want to remind everybody, the clerk gave me a, a sticky note that the referent or the, the memo that the city attorney put together is on our website and it's listed under tonight's council meeting. So if you're looking for that memo, um, it's out there. And otherwise, you can, uh, get in contact with us if you need a copy. We're on to item eleven, which is for your information. We're, uh, meetings that were held, uh, through September. You can take, take those for your reading pleasure. Do we have any referrals for item twelve? Okay, if you have some, get them to the clerk and committees can take them up. We're on to item thirteen. What are your wishes? We have a motion by Rehm. Second by Zachary. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody oppose? All right, everyone have a good night.